Number two is not easy.
Uh, no, and it's just a long day, long two days.
Alrighty, uh, let's see, there's Brad, John, Stephen, David.
Heather.
Alright, Linda, you on? Was that you, Linda?
I don't see Linda, sir.
No, neither. Well, let's go ahead and get started. She's bound to be coming in and I'll text her here. Heather, you're on?
I'm on.
But you're still, uh, no screen, okay? Alrighty, well, welcome everybody that's, uh, joining us on this Zoom call for our town council meeting. Uh, we'll open up with our invocation from Stephen Ayers and then we'll do our pledge and then we'll get started. So, thank you, Stephen.
Yes, sir. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight just to say thanks for all that you do, uh, every day that we have on this planet, Earth, that just, uh, all the things that you provide for us. Uh, we do pray that you give us the wisdom and, uh, the opportunity to serve the town in the best way possible tonight and, uh, allow us to, uh, make the decisions that are best within your will. In your holy name, your son's holy name, amen.
Amen. Alright, thank you, Stephen. Alright, thank you, Aaron. Alright, this, uh, we'll say pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, I'll call the meeting to order and then, uh, we'll open it up for public comments. This is a, a time where you can, uh, address the council for three minutes on any topic. And so, uh, just, uh, state your name and address and if you want to, would like to talk, uh, let us know now or raise your hand on the screen. Would anybody like to, uh, have any comments and public comments? Alrighty, hearing none, we'll get, go down to the consent agenda and it's pretty lengthy. And I'll read out, we have the minutes from, uh, three eight twenty-one and three twenty-two twenty-one. A proclamation honoring emergency management system personnel. A National Police Week proclamation. The EPCOM settlement agreement, the Exeter settlement agreement. The text amendment, uh, twenty-one dot oh three dot oh one offenses. A statement of consistency and reasonableness for text, uh, twenty-one dot oh three dot oh one. Uh, text twenty-one dot oh three dot oh two flood plains and then a statement of consistency and reasonableness for that text amendment. And then a text amendment twenty-one dot oh three dot oh three on open space and then a statement of consistency and reasonableness for that, uh, text amendment. And then a resolution opposing HB two ninety-one and a resolution opposing HB four ninety-six. So, uh, is, does anybody want any of those read into the, the record or any explanation on any of those?
It feels like B and C proclamations ought to be read into the record. That's just me particularly Police Week. So, I'll be happy to read them unless you.
Alright, uh, Aaron, can you bring them up or do you have them already on your screen, Brad?
Uh, I do not. I don't know what protocol is, but I can maybe do the full consent agenda, then come back to these. Is that how we do?
Uh, we'll do the full, just read them and then we'll do the full consent agenda. Nope, so there's the first one. Nope, you went on mute, mute, Brad.
Alright, here we go. Town of Stallings proclamation honoring emergency medical services personnel, the town of Stallings, by and through the unanimous consent of the town council here by proclaims the following, whereas Union EMS was founded in nineteen eighty-five and has grown to include nearly one hundred and fifty paramedics, emergency medical technicians providing full advanced life support and basic life support services to nearly twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand residents of Union County. And whereas Union County EMS has for more than thirty-five years continuously served the citizens of Union County. And whereas Union EMS offers healthcare services through programs such as the Community Paramedicine Program, SRT Paramedics, who serve alongside the Union County Sheriff's Office and other specialty service areas. And whereas Union County EMS responds to more than twenty-two hundred calls for service per year. Whereas Union EMS is meeting the challenges of a modern healthcare work and be progressive evidence-based healthcare provider. And whereas twenty twenty has been an extraordinary time for EMS and first responders nationwide. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has caused a tremendous strain on paramedics and EMTs who have been increased, who have seen increased call volume, increased strain on resources, increased stress from dealing with a large number of sick patients. And whereas, while the COVID nineteen pandemic is a national healthcare crisis, the paramedics and EMTs of Union EMS have reported to duty day in, day out, under these tough circumstances, continue to provide the highest quality of care to the citizen of Union County. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic was met head-on by Union EMS professionals who rose to the challenge and served our country well throughout the worst of the virus. Therefore, now therefore I Mayor Wyatt Dunn on behalf of the town council and citizens of the town of Stallings in recognition of National EMS Week, does hereby proclaim this proclamation in recognition of the service and dedication of Union EMS personnel. And we extend our gratitude and appreciation to all Union EMS personnel. We congratulate Union EMS for a job well done this the tenth day of May.
Alright, thank you, Brad. And then the next one?
I'll defer, I'll defer to someone else to read that one. I'm tired.
Right, right, yeah, that was a long. Anybody else want to read the National Police Week proclamation?
I can do it.
Alright, thank you, John.
National Police Week proclamation twenty twenty-one, whereas there are approximately nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Stallings Police Department. Whereas nearly sixty-two thousand assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately nineteen thousand injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, twenty-two thousand six hundred and eleven law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have killed in line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Washington DC. Whereas three hundred and ninety-four new names of fallen heroes were being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including a hundred and eighty-two officers' lives claimed by COVID nineteen. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty are honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's annual candlelight vigil on the evening of May thirteen, twenty twenty-one. Whereas the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year on May ninth through fifteenth. Whereas May thirteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of fallen officers and their families. And US flags should be found half-mast. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and town council of the town of Stallings formally designates May ninth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one as Police Week in the town of Stallings and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
Alright, thank you, John. And, yeah, we can do the consent agenda all as one, but does anybody have any, uh, explanation on any of the other items in the consent agenda? If not, can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by?
Well, second.
Seconded by Mr. Ayers, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Alright, the ayes have it.
Mayor, hey, Alex, here, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, Ms. Cox, do we need to have a, a roll call vote for the consent agenda, given the, the, uh, zoning ordinance changes on that?
Yes, for the, for the zoning ordinance changes and the statements of consistency and reasonableness.
Alright, we'll just, uh, can somebody, uh, make the motion, just approve the whole consent agenda again, and then we'll do a roll call vote.
Make the motion to go ahead and approve the entire consent agenda as written.
Alright, motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Ayers again, is that correct?
Sounds good, babe.
Alright, Aaron, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. District one, Martin.
Hi.
District two, Shoal.
Hi.
District three, Paxton.
Hi.
District four, Grooms.
Hi.
District five, Ayers.
Hi.
District six, Richardson.
Hi.
Alright, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alrighty, uh, reports. Uh, giving you all an update, uh, on my conversations with, uh, Dean Arp and the legislature. Uh, first on three P. Alex has put together a great timeline that, uh, Dean requested to, to help him, uh, go to, uh, the legislature and get some funding. Uh, they're right in the middle of, uh, doing their battles, just like we are. And so he says, if, if he can get some money, he probably won't know until July, August, if he can get some money for us. But, uh, Alex has prepared a, a great, uh, synopsis of the, of the project and where we went from where it started and to where we are now. And that's what Dean's requested. And then we're going to send that to, uh, the whole Union County delegation. So, uh, so that's the good news on that. Also, talk to Dean about the hotel tax, uh, you know, it's, uh, it has gotten to the House Committee and passed the House Committee. Now it goes to the full house. Uh, I'm talking, uh, pretty regularly with David Cone from the Indian Trail Town Council. He's pushing it over on his end, but, uh, we're getting some pushback from the Senate side. Don't know why. It seems like a no-brainer. You know, Matthews, Monroe have, uh, hotel occupancy tax. Why don't, why can't we? So, uh, so we'll see how it goes. But right now it's, uh, Dean's pushing it through the House and we'll see how it goes. He'll know, uh, this Thursday, we'll know if, if, if it's voted on by the full house and then moves over to the Senate. So that's my report. So, uh, John, do you have anything for us?
Nothing this month. I think Alex will cover the stuff going on with our, you know, flood issues over in, uh, in the south part of town, so.
Alright. And then, uh, David Shoal, you got anything for us?
No, excuse me, no, not this time.
Alright, Linda, Paxton?
No report tonight.
Alright, uh, Heather?
No report here.
Alrighty, uh, Stephen Ayers?
The only thing that I got is I did follow up with a couple of individuals that came and spoke at our last town call. Uh, conversations went pretty well. They were pretty constructive and, and, uh, weren't, weren't hateful. They, they just had a lot of good questions, so. Uh, and that's really it for me.
Alright, well, appreciate you doing that. Alright, Brad?
Nothing tonight, please.
Alright, thank y'all. Alrighty, we'll turn it over to, uh, Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and good evening again to everyone. Um, so several items I wanted to report and touch base with the board on. Uh, the first was the Silver Line Light Rail. Uh, the, uh, town received a communication from CATS that the linked Silver Line Light Rail is moving forward with the fifteen percent design phase of the project. And CATS shared that based on discussions with the MTC, which is the Metropolitan Transit Commission, that further discussion is reportedly needed regarding financial participation, uh, for the fifteen percent design work uh, in the Union County. And I think the rub here is Mecklenburg County's fifteen percent design uh, is, is mostly being funded with the Mecklenburg County Sales Tax Funds, but Union County doesn't have uh, any such revenue source, uh, dedicated for light rail transit. So, CATS indicated that, um, it and MTC are seeking financial commitments from local governments like Stallings and Union County and Indian Trail, uh, that are outside of MTC protection to continue with the fifteen percent design phase in Union County. I believe a similar conversation is, is happening in, in Gaston County as well. And so, uh, CATS is requesting that Union County Stallings and Indian Trail leadership discuss the desire for CATS to continue progressing with that fifteen percent design and what financial commitments can be made to facilitate that progression. So, um, when, when I first read this, I think there are, are some clear, some still outstanding questions such as, is the MTC CATS vision, is it some sort of cost share? Or is it all on all the local governments in Union County? Uh, what is the final financial commitment? What further financial commitments might there be in the future? What's the timeline here? And so, uh, given those outstanding questions, uh, we've partnered with, uh, Union County and Indian Trail staff to kind of meet with CATS in the relative near future and go over a lot of that information. And once that information's gathered, circle back around and, and have that conversation with, with council. But, um, it, it sounds like, you know, the, the data I got from, from CATS was, uh, June the fourth, which seems, uh, very quick, almost impossibly quick to gets consensus from all those local governments. Um, but we're going to kind of continue and, and work towards that and get that information and circle around and, and have a conversation with the board. But, well, a related mention was, um, one of the items proposed in the Union County Conference of Land Use Plan was a quarter cent sales tax increase for transportation projects. Um, of, of the committees that are involved or were involved with that process, my understanding is the majority of them recommended approval of such a process. Um, however, the planning board most recently, when I say planning board, I mean, Union County Planning Board, uh, uh, did not recommend, uh, the, uh, the quarter cent sales tax increase. So that's, uh, going to the, uh, Union County Commissioners. There's going to be a, uh, a budget hearing or, excuse me, a Conference of Land Use Plan, public hearing on June the seventh. So if the board wants to take, uh, any position for or against a, uh, sales tax increase or any other item for the Conference of Land Use Plan, uh, it would be helpful to know that so we could kind of start working towards that and make sure that our voice is, is heard. So, um, that's all I've got on the light rail. Any, any questions or concerns or feedback or discussion points?
Yeah, we need to, uh, you know, get a consensus from the council, uh, that we, if we support or don't support the quarter cent sales tax for, be, uh, used on, uh, for transportation projects. So, uh, I think we need to send, uh, either we're for it or against it. So, uh, what's the, uh, feeling of the council?
Mayor, I think I'd be willing to say I'm for it becoming a referendum item in November. I think that was one of the questions and I would, I would love for the folks to vote on that.
I agree. I, I support it personally, but as a council member, I'd like to see the public vote on it.
Alright.
I certainly support it and I would like to see us, um, have either the mayor or I could go to the, uh, public hearing to speak on behalf of the council in support of, um, the quarter cent tax specifically for transportation and light rail funding.
Well, why don't both of us go, uh, Linda, and, uh, I'll let you speak since you're my, uh, transportation expert, so. And you're the vice chair of CARPO.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, and I'll go with you.
Okay, good.
Mayor and council, hearing that, what I'll put a note on here is maybe we could, well, staff will draft a resolution, uh, pass in, in favor of a quarter cent sales tax increase for transportation, including light rail transit. Um, and the mayor and the mayor pro temp, uh, will, uh, plan to speak at the, uh, June seventh, uh, Commissioners Meeting. Does that sound accurate to everyone?
Yeah, and, uh, if anybody has any bullet points they want to include in their resolution, you know, send them to Alex. Linda, you might have some data.
Absolutely, and I'll, I'll be sure to, uh, note in here, the resolution is in favor of, uh, putting the quarter cent, uh, uh, sales tax increase on, uh, to a citizen referendum.
Referendum, right. And then we'll, we can vote on it, uh, on the twenty-fourth.
Could I add that, that we have some language in there specifying that the, the revenue from this would be specific to transportation improvement projects such as light rail? I think that was the concern that I heard from some of my, uh, fellow, uh, folks working on the, the committee to rewrite the Union County Comp Plan was that, um, i- if it was just a twenty-five cent sales tax and there wasn't anything specific, you know, saying that it needed to go to these type of projects, that it would be spent elsewhere.
Sure, I'll, I'll put a note on here just in favor of putting the quarter cent sales tax increase to a citizen referendum for transportation funding specific for light rail tran- Sound okay? Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, I don't know if I put specific to light rail, but including light rail.
Including light rail transit.
Yep, alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, uh, American Recovery Act. Um, as you all know, we received some, uh, pretty lengthy guidance today. We got a notice at three o'clock this afternoon on what is, uh, might be eligible for those fundings. So, uh, give us a little bit of time to kind of wade through that and see initial reaction, just skimming through the materials, uh, events, is that the, uh, the rules are a little bit more restrictive than we might have initially thought they might be. Um, but we'll go through that and kind of circle back around. Downtown streetscape, uh, the, the board is, uh, interested in doing this as part of our, our downtown action plan. And, uh, one of the last times we talked about it, the original concept looked at just in front of the new and old town hall buildings. And the board wanted to expand that a little bit more to Community Park Drive and along the park area. And so, uh, we reached out to DOT, uh, to try to get, uh, some feedback on, uh, whether our concept will be allowed. There are several notable issues like on street parking, for example, that we need direction from them on before we got into engineering. And so, uh, we've had several conversations with NC DOT and we're waiting to kind of hear back from them. So as soon as we do and get some direction, I'll, I'll let you know. But probably the next step after that is doing some preliminary engineering work and getting some, some more hard design, uh, numbers. So, um, Potter Pleasant Plains Road. Um, so, uh, I wanted to, uh, kind of share a, a document that, um, I'd sent to the board on Friday and the mayor mentioned in his, uh, in his report. So, um, so it's a, uh, a timeline of just everything having to do with the Potter Pleasant Plains Project. Um, and, uh, the purpose of this document would be basically just to explain to the public, um, what's going on, what's happening, because it's obviously a very important, um, project for our community. It's been going on a, a long time and there's a lot of frustration there. Um, I know we all share that frustration with this project. So, I, I think the big takeaway is it shares the timeline. Um, it shares the out-of-pocket costs that would fall on the town if nothing changed here. And the effect of that, which is, you know, if, if this additional cost is covered by the town, uh, it would essentially deplete the majority of the town's available fund balance reserves. And then, uh, also at the same time, it, it shares the town's three-fold approach to, um, uh, to trying to fill that budget gap. First is, uh, we've applied to the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, CARPO, to identify and aggressively pursue, uh, funding dollars. And we, on the thirtieth, uh, submitted a grant for the maximum that we possibly could based on the project requirements for about two point two million bucks. Uh, about two point one nine seven million. So they're under review right now and we're hopeful we'll get a positive response probably in July on that. And then it would probably take, uh, perhaps through October to get everything nailed down as far as the agreements and getting DOT to approve everything. So that's the first part of the plan. And the second part would be, uh, what Mayor Dunn mentioned earlier would be coordinating with our state elected officials, uh, in an effort to see if they could help us secure additional state funding because it is a state road. And then finally, uh, request from the DOT that the, the, uh, intersection be improved, there are additional maintenance on it because it is in bad shape in the interim until the budget situation can be resolved. So, uh, I think the plan would be to put this up on the website. We'd have a shorter version, we'd share with all our staff, uh, so that if, pick any, any random employee in town, if they got a question about it, they would know what's going on and be able to answer it, since this is something we get questions about a lot from, from the public, um, regardless of what department you're in. So, um, wanted to confirm that that three-fold approach was good and y'all are good with us, uh, putting this up on the website.
Good with it. Thank you.
Uh, can I get a consensus on it? Anybody, uh, not agree with this, uh, letter?
I just have one question, Mayor. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of actionable items that are going on there. And, Alex, like, do you want, I mean, this stuff can get out of date pretty quick as we've kind of talked about. So, I mean, would there be a plan to update this document on the website? Every month, every couple of months? What, what is your thought there?
Great question. Um, I, I think the next big, uh, item, the next big domino to fall, right? Because the plans are all set and ready. Um, we've still got to bring y'all some, some construction engineering and RFQ, some info for that. I'll follow up with you in the near future on that. But the, the biggest thing is going to be finding out whether we get the CARPO money or not. And I think naturally, when we find out whether we do or not, we'll come back, we'll have that conversation with the board, determine what continued direction we want to, want to go. And then from there, we can naturally use that at the springboard to update this information um, and, and update it on our website. So, um, I, that, that's the kind of way I see it. Um, does that make sense, Stephen?
Yeah, so, so roughly at this point, probably early August-ish would be the next update here.
I, I'd say probably more like July.
Okay, alright.
I think we should, we should know, uh, sometime in July whether we get the funding from, uh, from CARPO or not. So, and then from there, it may be the August council meeting, but we should be able to, maybe, yeah, probably August, because we probably want to circle around, talk with the board and determine the direction we still want to maintain.
Okay. Alright.
But are y'all comfortable? Do you want us to just put it on the website? Y'all want us to put it on social media? Push it that way as well? We could have a short version. We could create this, that?
No, I, I, I think people need to see the full story and I think this tells the full story.
Yeah, I have no problem with putting the whole thing on there.
Right, okay, we'll do that. Um, and then finally Farmer's Market, uh-
Wait a minute, before we move on to this, I had a question and I want to bring it to the council's attention. When, uh, Linda and I and Alex met with, uh, Brett Knight from DOT a couple of weeks ago, and I didn't challenge him on this in front, in, in, in the group, but I wanted to, I've been thinking on it. Uh, he said, I asked, uh, he said, the reason why DOT hasn't approved this intersection because it wasn't submitted for review. And so my, my, I, I don't understand that. Were, Alex, are we supposed to submit intersections or town, or parts of towns that need to go into their review process? Uh, you know, I, I, I didn't understand it, uh, his point when he, you know, that's what he was blaming it on us, that we didn't submit it for review.
I, I think the, I, I, I think the reason it wasn't submitted is because it's a locally administered project. And, and I'm not aware of anyone submitting those as part of step funding, just because I think the idea, right, was the funding was already there. Um, and so certainly for outstanding projects, we submit those as far as step funding goes. But for this one, you know, everybody was under the impression that the funding that had been given was adequate, right?
Right.
Doubt, you know, just because of rising costs and, uh, whole history of just time, i- it's not, right? Um, so perhaps would have been enough cost, uh, the funding would have been adequate if it was, this was done in twenty fifteen as it was originally conceived. But I, I think now it's just kind of a, uh, an odd project in that it's such an important project, but it just hasn't gotten, get, gotten done. And it's just the length of time it's taken. So, I don't think it's unusual that it wasn't submitted. I think it would have, they probably would have looked at us oddly if we had submitted, just because funding's already secured in some level. So I think the proper way, because it, it's already been funding in some level, is to do exactly what we're doing and secure funding for a budget shortfall through CARPO. That makes sense?
I understand the explanation, it doesn't make sense to me why it's done that way, but, uh- that answers my question, though. Thank you, Alex. Alrighty.
Questions on that? I got a couple other quick things to run through.
All right, go ahead.
Farmers Market, got a lot of good feedback on that. We're just getting started, so the potential's there, we can all see it, so. Good job by Parks and Rec and all those things, gotten a lot of good feedback and they'll kind of wade through that and over the next month, kind of let it happen. And then start to really think about, all right, what are some ways, some things we can do to improve it? Bypass landscaping, as you all know, NC DOT is part of the Monroe Bypass, specifically the intersections around Highway seventy four. And Stallings Road and then Commerce Drive and Highway seventy four. They've said, all right, we'll put in some landscaping in this areas, but hey, town, you've got to agree to maintain it basically and take care of it essentially in perpetuity. So we want to make sure that aesthetically it looks great. We also want to make sure because the town's responsible for maintaining it in perpetuity that the maintenance levels are contained, because that could be, if we weren't careful, very, very high annual reoccurring costs. Myself and our Public Works Director Brian Price, as well as our interim town engineer Bo excuse me, Bo Connerly, sat down with DOT, their landscape architect, and went through all the paintings, all the areas. And identified some ways we could kind of meet those goals and still keep it looking nice. For example, there's some areas right very, very close up to the bypass wall. I mean, there's probably not a foot, maybe a foot between the Jersey concrete barrier and the side of the wall. Anything that's really planted there is probably not going to be successful and going to be a costly thing to maintain. So just adjusting what we do there. You know, walking through all the plants to make sure DOT has had success with those plants and other areas, asking questions, changing some things up, taking out some sod and areas because grass is definitely a high maintenance type of plant, as we all know. And we've actually gotten to the point where we could, it's a water wise approach. We could actually remove irrigation system and not have that installed, which could potentially save the town a lot of money, so. We went through that with DOT. Long story short, they're going to kind of make some of those updates and then kind of send back to us. And once we get that finalized, we want to kind of circle back around, have that conversation with council and and get that final confirmation as to whether it's on board with taking over the landscaping and maintenance responsibility of the bypass, since it is so significant. Any, any feedback or thoughts on that at all?
Mayor, I wanted to make a comment about the irrigation. That is something that we negotiated with NC DOT a good time ago. I'm not sure how long ago it was, but NC DOT has agreed to install that and to pay for the installation. It was no cost to the town. The cost would come as we used it. But I would really want not want us to remove that from the plans because a lot of you probably remember the drought we had in two thousand six and basically all landscaping just about died everywhere, but I mean, we could have control over the frequency of using that irrigation, but I really personally do not want to see us remove it from the plans because NC DOT has agreed to pay for it and to install it. We can use it or not, once it's there.
Right.
Our schedule, but why would we want to remove it?
Yeah, I agree with you. You're right, so.
Mayor, this is Brian Price, Public Works Director. Could I share a couple of thoughts on that as well?
Sure, Brian.
I definitely understand what Linda's saying, you know, it's it's paid for and why wouldn't we install it? The only concerns I would have is just, you know, if we do use it, that will be a utility cost to the town. And also there will be an ongoing maintenance cost there as well, because it's three different locations. We're talking about putting it, which is three different backflows that will have to be inspected every year and winterized every year. And also any kind of issues that we would have with pipes bursting or sprinkler heads bursting, you know, kind of like we have irrigation here at Town Hall and in the park. But it hasn't worked since I've worked here. I mean, neither one have worked correctly and you know, just been several issues that it just got, they just stopped using it before my time because of the issues they had with it. And and so that, you know, that's kind of just my thoughts on something like that. Again, the best be a cost to the town and maintaining that. And then also, when I spoke with NC DOT, there's nothing that's in place there now. So all of those spots they're talking about, you know, they would have to figure out some way of getting the water to it, so they're going to have to you know, be drilling under the road or under the sidewalk or what have you. It's just a lot of it's a lot of work to get it there and then it will be, you know, quite an expense to upkeep it, even if we don't use it a lot. There's still something we'll have to to keep up quite a bit.
Brian, if we were to have to say that we didn't install that and say we did hit another major drought period, what would the cost to the town be to, you know, fill up a few water tanks and and weekly go out there and heavily water stuff? To get us through the drought versus annual maintenance?
Not much if anything, because, you know, we can, we can put a water tank in the back of one of our trucks, you know, they sell those, you can get them for a couple of hundred dollars. And all we would have to pay is whatever the county would charge us to fill up from a fire hydrant. I'm not a hundred percent sure what that is, but I know it's a pretty low cost. And then it's just a matter of riding by and spraying the areas that would need to be sprayed, but I'm assured from NC DOT that they're putting out a lot of low maintenance, you know, items in this area. And if anything else they've done, they they told us that as far as District Ten goes for them, this will be the first irrigation they've ever put in place. So, you know, most of their area, they do hold up pretty decently, you know, with no water.
Well, I think if we look at the locations for these, this is right in front of Atrium Hospital. And you remember seeing the visuals of the landscape plans for the medians, they are on Stallings Road in front of the hospital and then on the other side. I think we envisioned that there would be some annuals there, some pretty colored flowers and things which would require some water. I mean, I know we can do landscaping that is drought resistant and doesn't require a lot of water, but if you want something really pretty to create that gateway into Stallings, we're going to have to have some flowers. And, you know, you see them all over the area where there's annuals put in every year and they bloom beautifully and it creates a real eye catching vision. So I really don't want us to skip here. I think it's important. It's the most important intersection in our town.
This is Mayor Pro Tem Pax, and I I do agree with you on that. And that is one thing, you know, if you that me and Alex, Town Manager Alex, when we discussed this, you know, we kind of went back and forth on what what we would want to do there, you know, because it is a high profile area and, you know, we will we'll definitely go the direction council wants us to go, you know, we just wanted to make you aware of any issues or options that we do have, but you know, I do agree with you, you know, that this area should, you know, it's it's our major intersection into the town of Stallings, you know, it's our main vein there. I do agree that it needs to be pristine.
The other thing is, once the to me, you know, I talk to Atrium probably once a month about things. You know, I've asked them for some money and they've turned us down and then they haven't really given us any significant contributions yet, so I can't believe that once we we start doing this aesthetic landscaping, that they're not going to help us out, so. I'd hate to have, not have the irrigation in and then we and then come up to say, well, they would pay for it, something like that, so. So what's the, what's the rest of the council? Thought on this, so we can give Alex some direction? Right, you're breaking, you're breaking up. Couldn't understand you.
Let's see if this is better. I asked Alex for a separate briefing on the landscaping plan. I'm not a hundred percent familiar with it, so. I'm concerned about long term maintenance. I would like to know what alternatives to the to the flowers are. I don't know a lot about landscaping. I would like to know alternatives, but I'm waiting for a little bit of time for Alex to brief me on that.
All right, so I'll put you down as a undecided right now. All right.
You know, what we, what we could do is just go back and tell NC DOT to kind of keep the irrigation in there. Really, the what they've got in here right now is, you know, we didn't change as far as the the native grasses and the small flowering trees. I think the color they were planting from, from this plan was coming from probably some of the flowering trees more than anything else, so. What I'm hearing is perhaps telling DOT to keep the irrigation, trying to identify maybe some key areas for annual beds.
Linda, is that what you were looking for?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm looking for.
All right. So not hearing any other.
I'm fine with it.
All right, thank you, David.
I'm good with it, too.
All right, well, that's that's three. You know, I support it, so that's a majority. Stephen, you want to weigh in?
I have no, I had no, I don't have any, any pull on this one here, man.
Okay, all right, well.
This is the placemat principle.
Yeah, all right, Alex, you got it then, that.
And the, and the last report, Aaron, can you talk to those stuff committees, please, ma'am?
Sure, thank you, Alex. So we have asked our committee liaisons recently to ask the committee members whose terms were expiring to reach out to them to see if they were interested in reapplying for reappointment. To date, we have only heard of one of those committee members out of all of the committees who would like to be reappointed. But we do recognize that this is kind of an odd time, the committees haven't really been meeting. And just so you know, for the sake of this conversation, I'm not speaking of the planning board or the assessment. These are the other committees. So since it's kind of been an odd time, they obviously haven't been meeting for a year. It's kind of a dead period. They haven't really been engaged. So what we would like to propose, if the council is okay with it, to kind of do, put out some information on social media, letting everyone know that we're looking for people who would like to serve on our boards and committees, so that when everything does open back up and we're able to meet with those boards and committees again, that we hopefully will have full boards to do so. So we just wanted to make you aware that we would like to do that and then hopefully bring back to council any applications that we have received in July for those boards and committee reappointments or appointments.
Yeah, when Alex brought it up this morning to me, I thought it was a great idea. We got to try something different, so I appreciate y'all thinking about it.
Okay, well, unless there's any objections, we'll begin kind of putting out some information on social media, letting people know how to apply and letting them know how to look for the different boards that we have. And then hopefully we can get some response and get those positions filled.
Aaron?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor. I I just want to know, who would have sent those out? I mean, would it have come from each individual liaison?
Yes, so there's a staff person that is a liaison for each of the committees. And so the staff would have reached out if there were any vacancy terms or reappointments needed to those specific committee members.
I mean, it just, I'm cautious. And I'm just pointing now, I mean, I'm cautious because, I mean, it feels like it would be unusual not to get those replies back. And, I mean, those committee members probably weren't engaged last year for the most part. I'm, I, I don't know, I kind of feel.
Well, let me make it clear, this doesn't mean that they can't reapply and that you guys cannot reappoint them. You certainly can.
Okay.
Above and beyond those that are currently serving, whose terms have expired, we we even have more vacancies beyond that.
I got you, got you. All right, all right. I just wanted to, I mean, that just seems bizarre that you'd only get feedback from one, one individual.
Yeah, we we did feel that way as well, but again, you know, we thought maybe it could just be a situation where people just haven't been engaged recently and aren't really looking for those emails, but we thought, you know, just more information on social media, maybe it'll bring their attention.
Gotcha. All right, thank you. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
So do we have an anticipated time when committees would start to meet again on a regular basis?
I guess that would be up to the governor and when the pandemic has ceased. Unless the council wanted to amend your remote meeting policy or your and your policies in general, because as of right now, since we're under a state of emergency, that was the direction is that no non mandatory committees would be meeting. In other words, advisory boards were on hold. Where, you know, but the Board of Adjustment and Planning Board are meeting.
Didn't we have a decision, though, that we were going to start doing in person meetings coming up in July?
Yeah, the council, the council is.
Could we not start committee meetings back then as well?
That that would be up to the board, ma'am. Meaning up to the council, if that's what you wanted the committee, what that's the direction we wanted them to go in. But the timeline that we are proposing would be to start appointing those people on committees in July. So if that's something the council would like to consider, I might suggest waiting for those committees to begin starting again in August. If we're appointing in July.
Yeah, I agree. If the council's meeting, we should, our committee should be able to meet, so why don't we do what follow Aaron's recommendation, allow them to start meeting in August?
I have had one member of the Transportation Committee asking when we were going to meet, wanting to reengage, so I think some people at least are interested in serving and and being a part of things again. I like the idea of starting back in August.
I'm just worried that people that join and then lost a year, they have not gotten the experience they had hoped for to, I don't know. That maybe that's just me.
Well, that could be part of it, you know, they come on excited and then it's doesn't meet their expectations, so they got something better to do.
Yeah.
So, so let's, does anybody have any objections for the committees to start meeting in August? Alrighty, well, let's, what do we, do we need to draw something up to vote on? Aaron, if we do.
Well, if there's, if there's one other thing I might point out is that if the council is planning on appointing people in July, who have new appointees, meaning someone who has never served before on, it's not a reappointment to that committee. Currently, your policy for your board and committee appointments requires for someone to attend one meeting of that committee of their choosing prior to being considered for appointment. So I might suggest if the board is wishing to move forward in this manner to waive that one requirement for for this particular year, since the committees are not meeting.
I agree. Anybody else, anybody disagree with that recommendation?
Sounds good.
Good to me. With COVID, you can make, with COVID, you can make any, any rule and blame it on COVID, so everybody will agree with it, so.
Well, we will then, I will, we'll do some pushing on social media. We would respectfully ask that you, as council members, also spread the word on your own pages and then we will bring back to you any applications that we receive in July.
Thank you. I know we got some people listening on the meeting tonight that need to apply, so that was, that's my one hint.
Nobody's arms hurt after that, huh? Or arm twisting.
Yeah, alrighty, what else you got for us, Alex?
That's it, sir. Thank you for your time.
All right, chief. Are you still on?
I just had one real quick comment. As you read that proclamation for Law Enforcement Week, on behalf of police, I just want to appreciate Alex and you and the council for your support. Just a quick note, John Flynn, our Assistant Chief, was invited to be, to play taps at the two funerals of Watauga County deputies that were killed last week. So they sought him out and I thought that was a great privilege and honor for John, although a very sad occasion. A fitting tribute, thank you.
Thank you, chief, for bringing that to our attention. So Ashley, I see you're on, you got to report for us?
No, sir, other than just reminding everyone that, you know, our farmer's market is going on and we are seeing some great success with that. We've had multiple vendors sell out both of the first weekends here and we anticipate as we get into the heavier season for produce that we will see an increase in the number of vendors at our site. And we are also in the process of putting together a food truck schedule for the market and we'll be launching music every third Saturday starting in June.
All righty.
Can I ask, Ashley, a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Hey, Ashley, I mean, I've come by there probably at about 10:45 this past Saturday and it looked like we had a pretty good crowd. Are we at a point that we're having to worry about overflow parking or anything like that there?
Yes, sir, we are. We do have our vendors for the farmer's market are, have been parking in our overflow lot next to the park. Starting this next week, they'll actually be parking across the street at Town Hall to help mitigate that. We also have a large workout group, our free community workout on Saturday mornings that runs until about 9:30. And those people are parking across the street at Town Hall as well to make sure that we have enough free space to keep going through that. The great thing about the farmer's market, right now, the size of it is still manageable enough that people come, they're there, you know, 15, 30 minutes at the most, and then they're cycling through. So we haven't had to turn anyone away. But we do have our part-time staff member kind of patrolling the parking lot and helping people find where the vacant spots are. And usually, you know, if you drive around once or twice, someone's backing out and you can pull right in.
Okay, I just noticed that when we came by, I mean, it looked like it was pretty packed. So didn't know if the question. And the other thing was, I did want to take and just say thanks to both yourself and the staff and also our police department for all the work that you've done there. Because I know that there was some traffic management, I think, that was going on and.
Absolutely.
And so there was, it was a pretty good crowd up there this past Saturday, from what I could tell. So just really great job out there, really do appreciate it.
Very popular with the flowers for Mother's Day. And we actually had two strawberry vendors this week because we sold out of strawberries in the first hour on the first weekend. And then both strawberry vendors sold out by 9:15 the second weekend. So it's definitely strawberry season. But so far, we're getting a good response from the numbers that we're seeing, but also the sales. Our county counterpart, Jessica, actually tracks that with each of the vendors. And so every month, we'll get a report from her about, you know, what's working, what's not working? Where do we need to make adjustments and track those numbers? But everyone has been thoroughly pleased. We actually had a couple vendors tell us they did better the first weekend at our market than they had the previous weekend at a different market, not the Monroe one, but a different market in the area. So we're pretty excited about it.
Well, and my last little piece here is that when I was there the previous week, I think there was something said to a lady that was selling crafts. I wasn't aware that there was restrictions, but it sounds like maybe there might be sales restrictions or vendor-type restrictions. Can you kind of, I mean, I wasn't aware of that, so I apologize if maybe I missed that in the conversations that we've had here. But can you kind of just, if I'm the only one that don't go into it, but if I'm not the only one, could you kind of, in just a couple of sentences, tell us what the restrictions are? On us?
Sure. So we're working under the county's model for, that they use for the Monroe market. And the restrictions that they have, it's not necessarily crafts or not, but in order to sell certain items, if they're not handmade, then you have to have a retail license. So that's something that we have to work through. Also, certain people have, they have to have inspections done on their kitchens and they have to send food samples off in order to sell certain items. So for instance, jellies and jams are okay. But if you start pickling items, you know, like okra or cucumbers or anything like that, they actually have to be sent off, I think it's to Clemson, where they do food testing in order to qualify to be able to sell those items. So it's a little complicated, mostly due to USDA regulations. And there's some pretty stringent weird things in there when it comes to those. But for the most part, we're handling those on an individual basis. As far as crafts go, we wanted to concentrate primarily on getting our produce and our food service items out initially. We obviously have room to expand for vendors. And that's one of the things we were talking about with our weekends that we have live music is the possibility of having a second field available just for crafts. We've done craft shows in the park many, many times, all of our festivals have had it. So I just ask you, be patient with us, let us, let it grow. And, you know, as we're partnering with the county, it's a learning experience for both of us, where we have our strengths and our weaknesses. So we're learning to kind of work together and augment those areas that we can keep it successful.
Why, I can't stress how well, I mean, obviously, I don't know much about farmer's market, but it looked like it was doing, you guys have did a knockout job, so we really do appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ashley. Let's see, Lynn, I know you, we got some other stuff. You got anything else you want to, anything else?
No, sir, I do not this evening.
All right, and then Colleen, I see you're on, do you have anything for us? All right.
Sorry, sir, no, sir, I do not, thank you.
And then Brian, I see you're still on, anything else you need to bring to our attention?
No, sir, no report per se. I did want to apologize to Mayor Pro Tim Paxton on the landscaping irrigation. I had not previously realized that was a council direction with that and I do completely understand where she's coming from and we'll make sure they keep that in there.
All right, thank you, Brian. All righty, that takes us to, oops. All right, our agenda approval, does anybody have any additions or deletions or want to amend the budget as submitted? All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Richardson, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, as have it, all right. First up is item number four, conditional zoning, 20.07.02, the Shirley White trustees. And I'll open the public hearing and turn it over to Lynn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Alex, if you wouldn't mind unsharing your screen, I will pull up my presentation. Thanks, thank you.
Excellent.
Yeah. All right, we have before us this evening a request for a conditional zoning amendment. The app, what is being requested is that condition number two of the originally approved conditional zoning, CZ 0706, be amended. That condition specifically addresses the architecture for the approved project. Just to give you an idea of where this property is located, the property we're looking at is highlighted there in blue, it's off of Matthews Weddington Road. The owners of the property are the Shirley White trustees. This parcel is currently vacant, it's about 19.6, so almost 20 acres. No TAA was required for this project and the required community meeting was held in February of this year.
Lynn, we see you, is there supposed to be a presentation up in front of us?
There is, let me try this again. How's that, can you see it now?
Got it.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that.
All right, if you can make it bigger, oh, there we go, great.
Got it, okay. I'm just going to go back to the screen so you can see the property that we're talking about highlighted there in blue off of Matthews Weddington Road. I wanted to give everyone some background on this particular project. This is a conditional zoning that was approved back in 2007. I believe some of you, a couple of you may have been on council then. But Mr. Larry Riley brought before town council a request to have this property rezoned or conditionally zoned for a 65-unit townhome project. It was approved. And in 2007, as part of the improvements for this project, NC DOT required Mr. Riley to install the traffic signal and the turn lanes there at Antioch Church Road and Matthews Weddington Road. And then, as you all remember, in 2007, 2008, there was a turn in the economy that particularly impacted development and Mr. Riley did not move forward with the project at that time. But due to the large, or the significant financial investment that he did make on the property, he came before town council and received a vested right to the use of the property for townhomes. We have sought legal counsel just to make sure that we are following all the rules of that vested right that was approved. And our legal counsel has advised us that the current developer, Pulte Homes, can build the project as approved, but they will have to comply with all current state and county development regulations that apply to the property. And what I mean by that is, one of the major changes that's happened since 2007 is there's some stream buffers that did not exist when this project was approved that are in place now, that have impacted the ability for the developer to put all 65 of those townhomes on the property. So it has reduced the number of lots within the project to, I have 43, I believe it may even be lower now. The applicant will address that in his presentation. But I believe at the planning board, he said that number was even down to as low as 39 possibly, but they will address that. I also want to point out that the original conditions of approval for the original CZ still apply to the project, including the condition that addresses the building elevations. So that's why we're here this evening. Pulte Homes is seeking amendment to that condition that will allow them to build a product that's in line with their brand. I didn't want to just point out the site plan to everyone because this question does, even though it's not something that's being asked to be amended this evening or part of the request, the site plan on the right is what was approved in 2007. You can see there was a significant amount of townhomes on the property. On the left is the current site plan and you can see those stream buffers that I referenced. They're in the hat along those streams or my arrow is here. I believe this stream buffer is around 100, I believe it's 100 feet from the bank of the stream. And then this is an intermittent stream on the property, it has a 30-foot buffer. So that is what's making it difficult for the developer to build all 65 of those units. These are the elevations that are being discussed tonight. On the left are the elevations that were provided in 2007. I believe this is actually an architect's rendering. We do not have anything digital, so I apologize for the quality. But you can see the elevations there, what they were proposed to look like. And then on the right is what is being proposed by Pulte this evening. They, Pulte Homes does have additional elevations that they will share with you in their presentation. I just wanted to give you an idea of what these elevations would look like. They're mostly brick with stone, brick accents as well as some party board. Whenever we have any type of zoning request and the conditional zoning amendment is considered a zoning amendment, we always refer to our land use plan to make sure that's what is being requested is in keeping there. And I thought it was interesting just to see that the current land use plan shows this is a walkable activity center. And we see townhomes in conjunction with the retail component of this project that was previously approved as well as the Solus project and the retail portion of that project and the connectivity that will be happening there. We feel like that is what is being requested is consistent with the land use plan. I mentioned previously, the community meeting was held on this project. That was done on February the 10th. Notices were sent out to the property owners within 500 feet. Several members of the community did attend that meeting. I believe there may have been a couple council members on that call as well. The main discussion really revolved around traffic in the area, issues with heavy traffic, being able to get in and out of developments, as well as whether or not this proposed project was going to access any of the adjacent neighborhoods, which it will not. So that was the main discussion that came out of that meeting. The planning board heard this on March 16th at their regular meeting. They did recommend approval with the conditions that are already in place. They wanted to make sure that those were maintained and presented the recommendation with those conditions as well as the condition of the amended elevations that are being presented this evening. This is the list of conditions that were approved with the original project. I put them here just for your reference. What we are looking at amending tonight is that condition number two. That is the end of staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And the applicant is here this evening as well with the presentation. And if you guys are fine with that, I'll be glad to turn it over to them if you don't have any questions.
All right, Lynn, any questions for Lynn?
Hey, Lynn, has there been any movement on the commercial components of the property in that area?
Not to my knowledge, no. I know that the property was sold to Harris Teeter, who I believe is now owned by Kroger. They do own the commercial portion of the property. That is all I'm aware of.
Appreciate it.
All righty, Lynn, who's here from the application, Scott?
I believe Scott, Fred Matrulley with Pulte Homes is here this evening.
All right, you want to share your screen, does he have a presentation?
Fred, we can't hear you, I don't know if you're muted.
Fred, can you hear us? Yeah, you're muted, we can't hear you. Okay.
Is he talking?
Yeah, we still can't hear you, Fred.
Hey, my.
Looks like he's having another conversation with somebody else. Maybe he doesn't know we're waiting for him.
Hi, Mayor, as we wait for him to be able to get off mute, I had a question. I'm not sure if it's best directed towards Lynn, but this is Erin Green, local resident. And I know some of the concerns coming out of the earlier meeting were around traffic. And I know, given the school, the development of the apartments, I mean, by the school, I mean, Union Day, there's definitely been increased traffic, you know, unforeseen and when this was originally approved. I'm curious how we're planning to manage that situation.
All right, hold up, now, who is, Erin?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us where you live and state your name again?
Sure, it's Erin Green and I live in Climbing Rose Lane neighborhood that's adjacent to the property that is going to be built near us. Off Lee Morris.
All right, Fred, were you able to?
I'm back, can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you now.
Okay, thank you, I'm very sorry about that. These things always tend to be a little difficult. Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, yes, I'll just run you through the proposed architecture. We, again, gone through planning board with this, with the successful approval. These, what you see in front of you is a typical string of townhomes that we are proposing. There's actually two different sized townhomes. There's, there's actually two different sized townhomes. On the ends, those are 33 feet in width. On the interiors, you have, I'm sorry, 30 feet in width. And the end units are master down and then the interior units are master up. So all, all two stories, all two car garages and various square footage on the interior units are 25, around 2,500 square feet and on the ends, 2,200 square feet. So like Lynn said, we are proposing hardy board siding. About 50% of the elevation is hardy board siding. The rest would be either brick as depicted on this end unit, this interior unit, and then we've got some that, that shows stone. This gives you just a depiction of what the end units look like. So the one interesting thing on those is the entry is around the side of those. So if I come back here, you'll see the, the front entry on the interior units and then you'd come around the side on each of, each of these end units. Lynn was in fact correct. The, the current density on the site plan is 39 units just based on site restrictions and constrictions. So that, that's gone down even a little bit more from the 43 she mentioned. And with that, I will answer any questions if there's any out there.
All right. Any questions from council?
If, if as Joe Martin, District One.
Yes.
I guess one question I would have is, looking at that, looks fairly monotone across everything. Are you planning on individualizing, excuse me, individualizing each unit a little bit so that they stand out from each other?
Yeah, probably. So that's not the, the final color schemes. So we probably would vary colors across units just to get a more, get a better variation of street, on the streets game.
Gotcha. And I assume the driveways are going to be big enough to accommodate, you know, cars back to back without.
Yes, they are. All, all units have a full, full length driveway. So you can have two cars in the garage and two in the driveway.
Thank you.
All righty. Any other questions from council?
I have a question, but it might not matter. But I really liked the original design. Why did it switch over to the new design? I thought the original one looked very unique.
This was, our proposal was just based on, you know, more traditional building products and designs that, that we do across the country and here in North Carolina. So the, the other designs were much, they were, they were more elaborate and there was some uniqueness that we just don't quite get into, make it difficult for construction purposes. So this is, this is just more in line with, like Lynn said, more in line with their brand and what our, our typical products offer.
Who was the previous builder? I mean, I was on council note seven, but I certainly don't remember what happened then. Do you remember Lynn or Fred, who was the previous design?
I do not. I'm not sure if there was a builder in tow at the time or if Mr. Miller was, was just putting conceptual drawings out there.
Right. Okay.
Mary, this is, this is Brad. I remember Scott Vickery and, well, Scott's on the phone. He could, well, I'll, I'll, I'll say what I remember Scott saying and then he can correct me. But I think when, when Mr. Riley put the project together, he modeled after Austin Village, which is at the intersection of Potter and Chestnut Lane. So I think that's what you see. You see the, it almost looks French chateau to me, but I, I appreciate Heather's comment. I didn't particularly love the design of it, but I don't, not sure that's to say, but I think that's why it changed. She, I don't think Larry had a builder at the time.
Got you.
Actually, there was a builder and I don't remember his name, but Cassie was intending to do kind of a green built community. You remember, we had a big newspaper article called "The Next Big Thing" that was published back about that development, but I can't remember the develop, the builder's name either, but I'm like Heather, I thought those first renderings were much more attractive than this. And I guess the concern I have, if you change the colors, I've seen some where every unit is a different color and I just find that tacky. So I hope that you're not planning to do that.
Very. We do, I mean, we're, I think we're certainly flexible. I think the intent of this color scheme was to try to keep it in, in line with what was originally proposed. Those seems to be more darker, darker tones, which is, which is why we arrived at where we have right now.
Right.
Any other questions for, for Fred or Lynn?
Is there a product close by that is within the same vein, if you will, that we as a council could drive by, look at?
You can, the towns of, of, at Audrey, the towns at Audrey Park is a newly completed small townhome community on railroad in Union County.
Oh, it's on railroad. Okay, gotcha.
The towns at Audrey.
Audrey Park.
Audrey Park. Thank you.
All right. Now Ms. Green, are you still on?
Yes, sir, I am.
Could you repeat your question, please?
Yes, I, since this is originally approved back in 2007 and our area has seen extensive growth and development as, you know, example, the, the new apartment complex in the area as well as Union Day School. I, I am curious how the new anticipated traffic will be addressed, especially as these townhomes, which was just indicated, will have two car garages, the ability to park two more. You know, I know we're growing rapidly and traffic studies performed previously are probably no longer relevant. I'm, I'm just concerned as a local resident that's seeing considerable backup already, how, if, if that's being factored in and what those plans might be.
All righty, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Fred, any comment on traffic? I know, you know, the history there, Mr. Riley spent a lot of money of his own money to improve it.
Yeah, the only comment I would have is, is obviously the, the density of the site has been greatly reduced and we're, we're just down to now 39 units. So, you know, traffic generation from such a small community is, although it will obviously add more cars to, to the traffic system, it is, you know, relatively small community.
Mary, this is Brad. I'm just, now that I'm just seeing, you know, the addition of the circle as well as the impact, you know, daily during the week of, of the school, it seems like an area that was previously not really congested is, is rapidly becoming so. So just, you know, point of reference and concern.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Green. Brad, you had something?
Well, just real quick, Ms. Ms. Green is exactly right. This is my district out in this area. We're blessed to have great neighborhoods and great infrastructure to some degree. The roundabout is helpful, but we're blessed to have a charter school to the south, charter school to the north and a public elementary school all around this area. I think things have gotten better with the infrastructure put in by Solus. I would, I'm looking at a picture on my computer of a NC DOT slide a while ago and it has a traffic circle constructed at the intersection of Tilly Morris and Weddington Matthews Road. Ms. Green, that is right in front of the old cemetery, which is now Union Academy or Union Day. I'm sorry. I'd like for Alex, if you could just do a little research for us and let me know, is that project still happening? On the slide, it's marked funded infrastructure with a known timeline, which said fall or end of summer 2021 or two. I can't see some gentleman's heads in the way on my picture that I took of the slide. So follow up on that for us. But I agree that reduced density is helpful here, but we do have a lot of traffic issues.
Brad, is there a, a project number on that?
I'll show you this picture. No, it's a picture I snapped of a presentation in a slide. I'll, I'll send it to you and you can see it's obscured partially by the audience.
If I recall, that's the, I'm sorry, Brad, I was gonna say, if I recall, that's the one that was prioritized over the roundabout we ended up paying for by NC DOT and then, you know, with the pandemic and NC DOT being NC DOT, it's still not completed.
Might be worth asking.
That's the Tilly Morris Roundabout, or correctly.
Tilly Morris Road and Weddington Matthews Road.
Thank you, sir. Will do.
Thank you, Brad. Much appreciated.
All righty. This is Brian Price, Public Works. Yeah, hey Brian, what do you got?
Hey, I was just, I was gonna be able to answer one question for you real quick. It was Arbor Gate Homes. Just so happened that what Linda was talking about, I have, I don't know if y'all can see my camera, but I have the article framed that she was talking about, "The Next Big Thing."
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Homes.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Any other questions for the applicant or Lynn from council? And then this is a public hearing. We've heard from Ms. Green. Is any other citizen wish to speak?
Yeah, this is, uh, this is Mr. Welton. Just curious if.
Mr. Welton, could you state your name and your address, please?
Yeah, it's Michael Welton. I'm on the, the Weddington side of this, so I'm just, you know, voicing my concern here, but I'm in the Climbing Rose property that actually butts up right neck or right at the back of this. So I have, I have two questions, if I may.
Yes, sir.
All right. So the first question would be, is I get the concern that the elevation is, is a concern? Would there be an opportunity to review the, the actual proposed elevation that would be installed? That's my.
Oops. Who was, can somebody answer that question for Mr.?
Well, this, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll give that a shot. With, you know, this, this is the actual proposed elevation that we reveal.
I think he was talking about final colors or anything like that.
Correct.
I mean, if the, we're, we're prepared to, to execute on this, these proposed elevations. So again, this is our first choice for colors and to try and keep, to keep it close to what was previously approved. Like I said, we would be open to changing colors, but that, that would have to be a, you know, a request from council.
Well, I thought when Mr. Martin asked you, were you going to change, change it up or some, have some individualization? You said yes.
Exactly. We can, we can, we can. I, I, I think that's possible and that's something we would consider if that, that was a, a request.
Yeah, and I think what the council would like to see is, you know, keeping it with earth tones. And, but having some uniqueness for each, each individual unit, you know, keeping with earth tones.
Okay, yep, yep. We would be willing to do that.
All right. Thank you, Brad.
And my second question would be, if I may, can you kind of elaborate on the rear buffer? I, I see on the plan that you have a 30 feet buffer. Does that mean the rear setback goes right to the, the 30 foot buffer? Or is there an additional, you know, backyard, if you will, beyond a 30 foot buffer?
Yeah, most of the units would, would have additional yard space in the back. I think you can see my cursor roaming around the screen there.
Yeah, I'm particularly talking about units 11, 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5.
So those, those would go right up to the buffer. There'll be a little bit of yard space on the interior units, but essentially those are, those are near and close to the buffer.
And that existing buffer, one last question I have, so three questions, is the buffer that's existing, the trees that are there, would those all be torn down and then it would be up to the, the, the property owner to put in a buffer or what, define what the buffer really means?
I believe that is, let me see. I don't know if that's called out. I may ask Lynn for some help there. We don't have, at this point, we don't have construction documents or grading plans. So I can't speak to, to whether or not we would, you know, how big of a area we would be clearing. But the intent is to save any existing trees that we can possibly save. And if we were, had to for grading purposes in order to stall these units, if we had to get in this buffer, then we would commit to replant it.
And just, Mr. Matrulie, just to answer your question, the original conditions that were approved with CZ, the original conditional zoning states that that buffer is to remain undisturbed.
Okay, then that, that's what we'll do. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other citizen wish to comment? All righty. Fred or Lynn, any closing comments?
No, thank you.
But Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Stephen.
Just to kind of follow up on the citizen question, I mean, what type of a distance do we have on those backyards? I mean, and, and this is more for Lynn, kind of what, what's the requirement for those backyards on those units? That.
I was gonna pull up the conditions just to see if it listed setbacks. And with a townhome, it's a little bit different, but it states on here, there are setbacks of 20 feet on the front and the rear of the unit.
Man, that looked awful shallow just from the picture here.
So that was my question in regards to the setback to the buffer, right? Especially to the sewer line that goes back through there.
Right. It's, it's, the way the conditions are written, there's a 30 foot buffer and then a 20 foot rear yard setback.
And answer your question, Stephen?
I think it furthers the question. So, so I mean, maybe this picture's not to scale, but it definitely is going to be at least a 20 foot backyard to these, these units before the buffer starts. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, that's what I heard. 20 foot and then 30 foot buffer.
All the way around, right? So that includes 11, 10, 9, 8 units, because that's not what's being depicted. So that would be a 30, or that would be a 50 foot buffer, correct?
The difference between a, a buffer and a setback is a setback's typically a rear yard where a buffer has to be undisturbed. So say the unit sits, say, say on lot number 11, that, that's the building lot. They can build their unit there and there'd have to be a 20 foot rear yard. So that doesn't mean that they can't use that rear yard.
Okay, that was my question.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that does. Thank you very much for, for stating that. My, my question was more from the rear facing of the property or the physical building. Where does that sit in regards to the buffer? Is that right on the line or is that 20 feet beyond the buffer? So, you know, we, we have some backyard there, et cetera. That's what I was asking. Thank you.
And I, and I think, I mean, even if you look at what's on the screen right now, I mean, there's a distance there of 20 feet that's shown there. I mean, it doesn't look like there's 20 feet behind 11 before that buffer starts.
No, that's, that's correct. There isn't. What Lynn's saying is the 20 feet we need to require is, or need to meet is from this property line. Am I saying that correct?
So what?
We do not disturb this.
There's a 30 foot buffer, right?
And, and then there's a 20 foot rear yard setback on the unit.
Okay, so that, that's what I'm looking for clarification on.
Is the setback, the setback is to the property line though, right? That's typically how it's made.
So I guess the question here is where it says 43 there, based on what Lynn said, I would expect that that's 50 minimal. But what you're saying is that you expect that that could be as little as 30.
Right.
Yeah, that, yeah, the, the.
Because you're saying the 20 foot setback can be included in the 30 foot buffer.
I, I don't believe that's how the, the condition was written. It's a 30 foot buffer and then the setbacks are established separately. So there'll probably be a building of units sitting here and the setbacks established are for the entire building. So the rear yard, the rear of that building has to be 20 feet from whatever property line is established for these units. Because I'm assuming with single family attached units, there's usually sub, a subdivision that occurs and the lot underneath the unit is owned. And I'm assuming that's where these setbacks would be, is for the entire building. So you'd have, you know, five feet on the side, 20 on the front, 20 on the rear.
So it certainly sounds like there's some clarification that we need there.
Yeah, because I agree with you, Stephen. Didn't you say, because so shouldn't it be 50? Yeah, because I agree with you, Stephen. Didn't you say, because so shouldn't it be, uh, 50 feet, 20 foot of setbacks, 30 for the buffer, be 50 feet?
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
But it not, Lynn, is it not to the property line? The setback is off a property line, correct?
Typically, yes, but you're talking in this instance, usually a s- it's not a, there's a project boundary buffer of 30 feet, the 30-foot buffer. And then you have a setback set on the actual buildings themselves of 20 feet. And you're creating, I'm assuming, property lines. Am I correct?
Right.
And that's where a setback is measured from typically. I'm assuming you'll have a whole building here. And then that 20 feet, i-it wouldn't be measured necessarily from here. Um, I, I mean, we would have to clarify that. It's not real, if you'd like, I can pull the conditions up if you wanted to stop sharing your screen, and you can see what was written there. That might be helpful. These, you can see there are specific setbacks established. And there's 30 feet on the periphery of the property, which is technically a, you know, a project boundary buffer. And then you've got these front and rear setbacks for the buildings themselves. And then five feet on the side, which is a little, honestly, a little contradictory, because you're not gonna have a setback between each unit. You typically are gonna have a setback between the buildings. And they're showing 10 feet here.
Number four answers the question, though. Buffer is inclusive of setback, not in the.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so that answers the question then. So the 20-foot setback can be in the 30-foot buffer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So if you want to go back to your other, uh, slide, Fred, your, your slide, can you do your fancy, uh, measuring device there?
I can, as soon as, yeah.
So the distance from building nine to the property line is 43 feet. So that include, you know, that, that's, and so from 11 to the property line is 34 feet, so. Alrighty. Well, we got to the bottom of that. Thank you.
So, so that, just to, just to clarify, though, that means that would be a four-foot backyard?
Right, you know, it's, you know, it's 34 feet. It's got a 20-foot setback.
They would have the ability to utilize this space, but cannot, cannot take any buffer out of it.
Yeah, that's.
Cannot take any trees down.
Right, and that's their backyard.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay, I mean, I got you.
All right. All right, any other questions from council? Alrighty, well, this was a public hearing, so, uh, uh, Lynn, you got anything else for us?
Um, no, sir.
All right, thank you. So I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll put it on the agenda for, uh, if, uh, Alex and Aaron put it on our May 24th meeting for a vote. Alrighty, next up is, uh, DA 19 dot 11 dot oh three, the Stallings Farm. So, uh, I'll turn it over to Lynn. A public hearing was held on 4/26/2021.
Hey, Ms. Air, I think you're on mute.
Um, just to kind of let, bring everybody up to speed. Um, the public hearing, um, as, as the mayor stated, was held on April the 26th. This evening is the meeting to consider the item and vote on it. Um, just to give you all the background, so you, you, everybody's up to speed on what we discussed at our last meeting. This is a 222-lot walkable neighborhood. The property that this development sits on is located at the corner of Stallings Road and Stevens Mill Road, across from Stallings Elementary School. Um, total acreage on this project is right around 83 acres. 19 acres of parkland and greenway land will be dedicated to the town. Um, so the density on this project minus that open space or parkland is about three and a half units per acre. Um, there is a requirement in MU1 that the minimum lot size has to meet a square footage requirement of 6,000 square feet. The applicant is complying with that. This is the, um, a rendering of the proposed development. Um, you can see the different lot sizes. These are alley-fed units on the interior. There are front-load units on the exterior of the project. Um, this rendering does not give us a clear view of where the parkland is. There's also some additional homes on the opposite side of the creek. You can see that better here. This is the 19.4 acres that will be no-donated to the town as part of this project. Um, this will be Sweet Birch Park that's identified on the Parks and Rec Master Plan, um, that will be donated to the town, um, as well as the greenway system that's shown as the Stalling Spine along Stallings and Stevens Mill Road. Um, there's different lot widths here. Just to remind everyone, there's 42-foot lots, 50-foot lots, and then 60 to 62-foot lots as well. Um, the project is split with by Stallings Road. There's east and a west side. Um, we talked a bit last time about the Parks and Rec Commons, about the greenway trails, about Sweet Birch Park, the improvements there. This is shown on the Stalling Small Area Plan. Um, the TAA was provided improvements that we went over last time will be included in the development agreement, and the developer will be including these and providing these improvements as part of their project. Um, I did include school data, since this is something that the council likes to see. We always send the site plans to Union County Public School for comment. Um, this will feed into the Porter Ridge Cluster. Currently, there is capacity in, in, in these schools, but there are numerous approved projects and Indian Trail and a few installings that will increase attendance at these schools. Um, planning board heard this on March 16th and re-proved unanimously. And as previously stated, we held the public hearing on April the 26th. Um, the applicant is here as well to answer any questions you might have about the development agreement. Um, the actual development agreement document, as well as the exhibits are included in your packet as well.
All right.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Lynn?
Mayor, could I make a comment, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to make a disclosure. I do not have any financial interest in this project, but I have a, a piece of property in the city of Monroe that, um, I'm representing the seller on, and we have, um, currently a contract on that property, and the buyer is the same owner as on this particular site. So I would like to ask council to respectfully recuse me from voting on this project this evening.
All right, can I get a motion to recu-recuse, uh, Ms. Paxton from voting?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Martin, second. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shaw. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, ayes have it. The motion passes for the recuse Ms. Paxton from voting on this Stallings Farm, application. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh.
Mayor, this is, I'm sorry, this is Brad. I was, I think, Linda, John, and I did the development committee on this one, so. I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the project, and if we get a second, then we can have some discussion.
All right.
Brad, I'm not on that committee. I think that must have been Heather.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Shaw to approve the stints, uh, Stallings Farm. Uh, DA 19 dot 11 dot oh three. All right, is there further discussion, Brad?
I, I was making the motion a second, so we could have further discussion if we needed to, but.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I thought maybe you had some, something else. I just wanted to make sure y'all did that composite decking, John. Are you on that, John Ross? Mr. Ross?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor, and we are committed to doing a composite decking material. Thank you for asking that question.
Well, I, I want to take a picture of it and, uh, make sure it gets in some trade magazines.
Mayor, Mayor, I do, I do have one comment, if, if I may, and, and it's, it's related to the, the public greenway or the Stalling Spine, their building. Um, notwithstanding this started with townhomes, now it's all single-family, so it, it should, it's lower density. I walked on the Solus, I think it's a 12-foot sidewalk last night. Jen and I walked over there and just took a tour of the property. If you've never walked on a 12-foot sidewalk, it, it felt like a thoroughfare. It's enormous. Um, so I, I think we're gonna be really excited, and those residents who live over there are gonna love the, the Stevens Mill, Stallings Road experience to those retention ponds and up to the school. It's just that it will be a nice feature, I think, and that's one of the things I like about this project, in addition to the connection to the park.
Alrighty, thank you, Brad. Any other comments? Now, Erin, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. District One, Martin.
Hi.
District Two, Shaw.
Hi.
District Three, Paxton.
Oh, she's been recused.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. District Four, Groome. Hi. District Five, Ayers.
Yeah, no.
I'm sorry, I don't know if we heard you, Mr. Ayers, because there was some feedback. District Five, Ayers.
And my mute button works, so, aye.
And District Six, Richardson.
Aye.
All right, ayes have it. The motion passes on the DA 19 dot 11 dot oh three. All right, look forward to seeing the project. Thank you, John.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and next up is the DFI proposal to, uh, that we discussed during our early budget meeting, and, uh, I've asked that, uh, we re-uh, recess this, uh, agenda item until we get further clarification in the budget. So, uh, any objection from council?
No, I think it's fine. It, you know, we also wanted it to, uh, get some better examples of, of what DFI has produced as well.
All right, so we'll talk about that later. All right, number seven, uh, crime scene technician position reclassification. Sorry to keep you on so long, chief.
Bernie's absolutely not. Erin, we go to that first slide for me? All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. So in March of this year, our crime scene tech retired from the police department after eight years. So as we tried to evaluate the best ways to utilize our resources, uh, we have decided to come to the council and ask to reclassify, uh, the civilian crime scene technician position to a sworn detective position. In essence, over the last two years, our crime scene tech has only had 14 call-outs to, to do the duties of a crime scene tech. So what we would like to do is, uh, swear in a new, a new detective. Uh, they will be trained to be a crime scene tech, but will also be able to manage a caseload, make arrests, follow up on cases, whereas our crime scene tech was only able to process the crime scene, um, and then turn the evidence collected back over to a, a police officer. Um, so we have a number of benefits to this reclassification. Um, currently, our, our investigations unit consists of a lieutenant and a detective. Uh, our CID lieutenant has just asked, and, and we've acknowledged the fact that he will be a great accreditation manager. So he's gonna embrace the role of clear accreditation manager. So we're trying to offset a little bit of his caseload. Um, so having this other detective would, would assist in that. And, you know, one of the repeating themes I say is I'm always trying to look for ways to, uh, increase our retention of police officers and having additional avenues for the officers to, to go through and, and able to achieve instead of just patrol or the one detective position. So, you know, over the last year and a half, we've added two officers to, uh, a local joint SRT team. You know, our other, we have a canine handler, our detective, current one detective position. So we're always looking for positions that will help motivate officers to stay with the department. Um, and again, that, that goes to the second bullet point of, you know, recruiting. When officers, when we're trying to get new officers in, and they look at positions and see what we have to offer, it's an important piece. So, uh, this new detective position would be, have about a 60-40 split. We're looking at trying to attach this officer to one of the federal task forces in the area. Um, we've already been invited, uh, to participate in two of them, just through conversations with colleagues throughout the area. Um, so we're just gonna figure out what the direction would be for that. But one of the other benefits of being part of a, of federal task force is the potential to increase revenues through Department of Justice and Treasury funds through asset forfeiture. Although not the most important thing, um, I do look at the asset forfeiture, I mean, but to look at, when we're working at higher levels, we're trying to, if we can kind of reduce crime from a high level, it will eventually trickle down into the town, and we're preventing crime from occurring here in Stallings, which is one of our, uh, most important tasks. So outside of reclassifying this position to a detective's position with the differences in salaries, um, we will have enough money left over to create a part-time evening records position, desk clerk position. There's been many times, just in the short time I've been here, that, uh, people have tried to come to the police department after 5 o'clock, and whether they're commuting from Charlotte to get here to get, um, police reports or accident reports, and the building's been closed because post-business hours, we locked the doors. So creating this part-time desk clerk position would put us, give us presence here at the police department from Monday through Friday, 5 to 9, and then on Fridays, 5 to 8 p.m. So people, it'll enhance our levels of service. It gives the community greater access to the police department. And it just, and enhances some security pieces, too, as we get out past COVID and folks start coming back to meetings here in town. And I look at the long term, uh, when the downtown development begins, we'll ha-I, I'm assuming we'll have more foot traffic in what this will be the downtown area, and, uh, people, more people will stop in the police department. So with all of this, uh, based on the salaries of those that have retired, um, and the creation of these new positions, there will be no costs to the town. This will all be used, uh, using existing funds. So I would ask that you tonight, uh, give us the approval or to reclassify that detective position, and then create this part-time records position. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, chief. Now, with the, with one, with one individual retiring, would this be, uh, replacing that individual, just reclassification? Or would there be, uh, would the head count increase by one, or would it stay the same with the retiree and then add one?
The overall head count of the department would stay the same. We would just go from, right now, we have three civilian non-sworn employees. We would just go down to two. So we're just really, it's really a shell game that we will add one sworn officer, but we'll have one less civilian officer.
Right, so the head count stays the same, and it's no cost to the town. Okay. I understand. All right, any questions for the chief?
Chief, I'm, I support this, um, decision, but I was curious to know, are you using any of our reserve officers? Because, um, I know in the past, we've had several officers who wanted, um, to get time with the town, and they were able to do some, uh, work. I wonder if they could do some of the evening coverage as well.
That's a, that's a great point you made, and when I, when I arrived here in 2020, we only had one reserve officer, and that was the outgoing chief, Minor Plyler. Um, so I don't know in the past what has happened with the reserve program, but it, it's interesting that you ask that, because as we're working on our goal-setting for next year, one of our goals is to, to re-implement and relaunch our reserve program, uh, because it is a great benefit to the department. Um, bringing both on our recruitment and retention, our recruitment side, but also having officers that have years of experience that still want to have their, their, uh, you know, be involved in police work. So we are looking at, uh, reinstituting that program. So we could use that in the future.
Good to know. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Linda. Any other questions for chief? Does the council want to, uh, address this tonight, or address it during the budget cycle, or meetings? What's the pleasure of the council?
Good with doing it tonight. It's no impact, no impact to the budget.
Yeah, can I get a motion then, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the reclassification of the civilian crime technician. I'll make the motion to approve the reclassification of the civilian crime technician to a detective position.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Paxton, second by Mr. Shaw. Uh, Erin, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. District one, Martin.
Aye.
District two, Shaw.
Aye.
District three, Paxton.
Aye.
District four, Grimes.
Aye.
District five, Ayers.
Aye.
District six, Richardson.
You're muted, Brad.
Aye.
All right, as have it for the, uh, reclassification of this position. So thank you, chief.
Mayor, I, I just wanted to confirm Alex here, uh, just the council's support for adding that part-time, uh, desk records clerk position as part of this as well.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, since we're past the eight forty-five, uh, over under, I'll go ahead and, uh, chief, there was a, uh, on talk radio today. There was, uh, a lot of, uh, ex-police officers from major, uh, New York, Pennsylvania, New Jersey cities, uh, wanting to retire up there with, you know, twenty-five, thirty years and come down to small-town America and, uh, looking for an easy job. So I don't think your job is easy or any of our guys is easy, but, uh, you, you might be getting, there's, there's a lot of guys retiring up there, look, coming down south. Well, that's interesting.
Always take a look, that's for sure.
Well, is, is North Carolina the only state that, uh, whoever you retire with, the fund is, has to absorb the retirement cost? Or how does that work?
Now, there's, there's none of, out-of-state retirees would have to re-earn their retirement here in North Carolina.
Oh, it's only out of state, okay.
North Carolina is one of the harder states to transfer out-of-state certifications from. Uh, me having experienced that personally, it's, it's, you gotta jump through a lot of hoops to get your certification transferred.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, well, that brings us to adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Paxton, second by Mr. Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Man, that one took a long time. Usually the adjournments comes as quick as somebody can say it.
Yeah. All right, thank y'all.
Take it easy, guys.
Heather, hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.